I'm waiting for my thumb. Oh, there. Got my signal. Good evening. It's May 3. And this is an 8:00 PM episode of the Select Board meeting. If you're paying attention, you'll notice that I am in a different chair than I usually am. And that is because at some point in this evening, if things go my way, there will be an election and I will no longer be Chair. So until that happens, I am indeed Chair. I do love that position. And so based upon a whole bunch of statutes, we're here. And also people can view us at home. And prior to public comment, et cetera, let's have ourselves the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now, I don't see anybody in our audience. But is there anybody on the Zoom who's going to have, who'd like to make a public comment? I don't, I don't see any little waving. All right, great. So without further ado, the first action item is to please consider reorganization of the Select Board. Oh, I guess, actually, I got ahead of myself again. Blythe, can you take us through tonight's agenda?
Sure. The action items include a reorganization of the Board and then to consider the liaison assignments to other town committees. To then interview and consider ratifying the Town Administrator's recommendation for the next Police Chief. After that, I consider award of a contract for the construction of the DPW salt shed. To consider appointment of Regan Malani to the Conservation Commission. And then the last item is to consider amending the dates of the Hemlock Lane Road closure from, to a different date in June. Discussion items or Town Administrator updates. There are four warrants and I believe there are two sets of minutes to be approved.
Thank you very much. Now cycling back to the first action item. The, every year after the election, there is a reorg vote, election, I guess, our mini-election. Typically, the person who was clerk becomes Vice Chair. The person who was Vice Chair becomes Chair. The person who was Chair becomes clerk based upon how many years out you are from the next year's election. Or looking at it another way, how close to the preceding election you were in terms of service for that particular cycle. So I am currently the Chair for at least the next 30 or so seconds. And in that role, I would, is there any discussion that anyone has relative to this? Or should we, do we have to do a vote?
Yep.
So do I have a, do I need to?
I would.
I don't see a motion or anything.
We didn't want to script what you might do.
Yeah.
Oh. I know, right? Well, I'm, I guess, usually I don't move as the Chair. I know some folks do. But in this instance, it would be my great honor to nominate Anita Mecklenburg for the position of Chair.
Second.
Well, we do one at a time, right?
You're all together, so you don't have to do a roll call.
No, 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 no. I mean, like, we do Chair and then Vice Chair and then clerk. All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, outstanding. But I'm going to finish this article, just for continuity's sake, before I hand over the gavel. And so I nominate Kevin Calcutt for the position of Vice Chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There's no opposed. So I guess that leaves just little me.
Go ahead.
I would move that we nominate C.C. Van Tyn as Clerk of the Select Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are reorganized.
We are reorganized.
That's, that is like a literal pass, literal passing, not figurative. Literal passing of the gavel. I've gabbled it over.
Put that in a sacred place.
Yes, yes, exactly. Thank you.
So here we go. So please consider the liaison assignments to the other town committees as our next agenda item.
So in your packet are the liaison assignments that have been in place for the past year since last year's election for the Board to consider whether you want to each keep the same assignments that you had, you want to change it up. We didn't script a specific motion because we didn't know if you'd want to make any adjustments.
Is anybody looking for adjustments?
No, I was woefully inadequate in terms of attention to, or attendance at mine. So I'm happy if somebody were to say they were really hoping for something. And now that I'm no longer Chair, candidly, I know that's somewhat of an excuse, but there were, there's a lot to do in the role. And so I'm also delighted to keep all of my assignments and actually make it this year. How about that? How is that for an assurance? But I am also, because Anita, I recall in the past, based upon your acumen, you had been interested in being on the school.
I've been also woefully inadequate.
Makes me feel so much better because I really do look up to you as the organizer.
I was thinking about the library for some reason in particular. And I thought Council of Aging was mine, which is another bad reflection on our, but anyway, I was thinking about the library and I was wondering if once every two or three years, they come and just tell us some of their goals, what they're working on, if they have an opportunity, these committees that we don't see, that might be, not to relieve us, relieve us of that responsibility, but to make public the work that's happening on our, so just sort of start a cycle, very lightly sprinkled, lightly sprinkled, with a short update on goals and accomplishments. And that would, we would still have our assignments, but I think that that is, there's benefit to that. Some of these groups we see more, more because of budget reasons or whatever, but some of these we've never seen, at least in my very grand three-year tenure.
We could work with you offline and what, if there's an order you'd like to.
Gosh, three years? That's a lot.
We could work with you offline, see if there's an order you'd like to have them visit in or something.
Cool. Something short and sweet, but just to have our finger on the pulse.
Sure.
While I am also plenty fine with keeping the configuration the way it is, if anybody is eager to join the Advisory Committee to give it a little change of pace, to be involved in those conversations and speak on behalf of the Board on some of the issues that come up or questions that come up, I am more than happy to trade for that as well.
I'd trade for that.
Yeah.
I used to, well, when I was on the Advisory Committee, I really enjoyed it as a place where I sort of got more of the, I don't know, the boots-on-the-ground view of the granular level. I'll mix my metaphors with abandon, but of what was going on. So what would you like?
Hmm, how about King Philip's schools? It's like draft day.
It's like draft day. It's almost as exciting. There's no jerseys, though.
More exciting.
No jerseys.
We could have, like, an actual draft next time with jerseys and beer.
Awesome. Is there any further discussion?
I believe so.
Do you want to make a motion?
Well, how would we, so we'd move as amended? So I would move that the Board make the liaison assignments that are listed in our packet with the amendment that C.C. Van Tyn takes Advisory Committee and Kevin Calcutt takes the King Philip's Schools for fiscal year 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're going to gas.
We will, we will cut it. And then we have the honor of the Police Chief. Blythe, do you want to talk?
Sure. So very pleased to bring to you tonight the candidate that I wholeheartedly recommend for Norfolk's next Police Chief, Lieutenant Tim Hines. Tim is joining us by Zoom tonight and he's, I think he's in the top middle square there, yes. There's a memo from myself in the packet about the process and about, you know, his experience, which is extensive, given all the, over 30 years he's been in the department, working his way up from a dispatcher and, you know, on the side, a call firefighter, all the way through Officer, Sergeant, and Lieutenant. We still, despite just having one candidate, we tried to treat this like a real, of a process that, to make sure that, you know, he's ready for the role. And so we interviewed him last week. We, being myself, the Fire Chief, Finance Director, the HR Director, and we also brought in a Chief from another department, just to give us perspective, who asked some great questions, especially situational ones that, you know, you'd hope don't happen in your community, but when they do, you need to make sure that somebody's ready. And Lieutenant Hines did an excellent job. Clearly showed us he was prepared and ready to assume the role. So he's here to interview with you. There are some questions that we put together. If you care to use him, you certainly don't have to. I think he's ready for anything you can, you can bring at him to make a decision about whether you agree with this recommendation.
Awesome. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening.
It's nice to see, there you are. You just got big, which was helpful for my old eyes. So do we want to just go through and ask questions?
Sure.
Want to ask a question?
Sure, absolutely. Hey, Tim, how are you?
I'm doing well, yourself?
Good, thank you. So first and foremost, I mean, you know, obviously you have a wealth of experience in policing here in Norfolk. Could you just talk a little bit about your vision for the force moving forward?
So, yeah, we want to continue to build off what we've been doing over the last numerous years. The Department is solid through equipment and morale. And it's just been a good place to be, to lead and to work at. And we want to build off that and continue to move forward and, you know, shape the Department, you know, as far as the new post restrictions and just, you know, excited for this opportunity.
Very good. Thank you.
C.C.? No, I don't have any questions.
I, I was interested to hear you talk about, police reform has been a really big deal. And I was wondering if you could share a little bit about what do you think, what are like the best parts of police reform? And what are the real, the hard parts or the worst or more challenging parts of police reform?
Well, you know, I think initially we all thought maybe it was going to be very difficult. But, you know, Massachusetts Police has been trying to get the, a form of post-police reform enacted. And it finally did happen. So I think there's some good things there. It brings training to the forefront. It, you know, gives a little more guidance on how we operate. So I think that's, that's a good thing. You know, unfortunately with it, there are some mandates that are funded. Police Department's going to have to absorb that. It affects the administrative staff as far as reporting and the things in those niches. But I think it's, overall, I think, you know, once we get a little bit more into it, I don't think, I don't think it's a bad thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Tim, I know that there's been a lot of talk recently about the modernization of policing. Obviously, police reform had aspects of that associated to the legislation. But from your perspective, are there any other opportunities that you would want to take advantage of or explore, looking ahead?
So, you know, the first thing I would like to do is get some time into the, to the seat. See what, as a Department as a whole, what we need to do, what we need to go forward with. I think we are, we're there as far as training. We're, we're there as far as equipment, you know, with, with the purchases of new firearms, the TASER program, you know, and things like that. So you can always build on training, I think. And I think that's one area I'd like to build a little bit more on. The more training we get, you know, implicit bias training that we do have now, but build on, on things like that. And, you know, just continue to go forward with, with the post recommendations.
Awesome. Thank you.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
If, what would you think, what are you looking most forward to with the role?
You know, leading a great bunch of offices. We really have a lot of talent in this Department. And we're all going to get the opportunity to, to show the talent that we do have. It's an exciting time. It's actually a historic time for Norfolk Police Department. You know, we've had the mainstay of Chief Stone there and Deputy Chief Carroll, which, they're unbelievable. They've led us to where we are right now. And, and just to build off what they've started and it's really exciting time.
When I was in the schools, one of the things I, we talked a fair bit about, and then it all of a sudden has blown up in the media with George Floyd situation. But we talked about what is our responsibility as a mostly white school, right? We're 85% white in our community. And what is our responsibility to even talk about racism or talk about those things? And I was wondering, like, what are your views about how that would affect? Well, I just, I guess I want to say a little bit more because I really felt like our responsibility in the schools, we had a heightened responsibility to lean into diversity and give our kids as many diverse experiences as possible because they weren't getting it inherently in our student population, right? And we wanted to raise them to work in a global community. But the police force has a different responsibility. And I was wondering, what is your feeling around that? Or how you feel like anti-racist visions unfit in our police department, given that we're a mostly white town?
So I think with Norfolk Police, we've always been inclusive with employees, with residents, as far as, you know, race, sex, religion, and sexual orientation. So, you know, there isn't a tolerance for that. And you need to, to continue to maybe look for ways to, in the Department itself, how do we get the unrepresentative population amongst the forces? So we've never not tried to do that, but I think, you know, just continue to do that. And interacting with communities, a big, a big purpose on that. And getting ourselves out there and doing what we're, we're doing and building off that.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have one more. So obviously recruitment is probably going to be at the forefront of priorities as we look ahead with the shortage of people who seem to be interested in pursuing public service or law enforcement. To that point, what ideas do you have to be able to take a different approach to recruitment or a creative approach to getting new people in the door? I know that you came in before and talked to us, talked to us about going up to Pittsburgh State, I think it was, to do some recruitment there. But what other ideas do you have to be able to reinforce that initiative?
Well, I think you've got to use social media. There's really not too many people that aren't on social media. So I think we have to put what our Department does, what we're all about, and get that out on social media and even including when it's time for hiring, advertising on social media. So we get just a better pool of candidates. And it's tough. The pool is very, very small right now and just everything going on. But I think, you know, just letting everyone know what our Department's about, facilities we have, the collective bargaining unit, collective bargaining agreement, excuse me, that we have, the training, the tools we have. So I think we're an attractive Department. And it's just getting that out there, I think, through social media. One of the best vehicles to do that.
Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you.
Last question I have is just a quick, why do you think that the pool is so small right now of candidates?
Well, I think everything that's happened since George Floyd and the negative aspects that's been put on policing. And, you know, we know through this town that we've always been supported and it's not that way, so it's important for us to get that out there. You know, there are sections of the country and it's happening. Even, it can even happen in state or locally. But, you know, right here, we've been supported by the town. We have a good Department and we support, we support the town itself. And I think that's what it is. It's tough to, you know, it's just that negative light. But I see it swinging back towards the middle. And it always does. It just takes some time.
Thank you. Any other questions?
None from my end.
I do not have any other questions. We're glad to have you here.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. And I thank you for the opportunity. I want to say thank you to the Board and to the interview panel. It's, like I said, it's an exciting time and a historic time for Norfolk Police Department.
Thank you.
Motion?
I move that the Board ratify the recommendation of the Town Administrator to appoint Lieutenant Timothy Hines to the position of Police Chief.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I look forward to working with you.
We look forward to it as well.
Thank you.
That's right. That's what I said. That's all I could think of at this point. Long day.
And then we are going to talk about the salt shed.
We are.
And the excitement never ends.
It doesn't. So as you know, last fall, we went forward, asked Town Meeting to approve funds to replace the, I think it's the 30-year-plus-age salt shed, which has experienced some damage from wind in the last couple of years and is, just doesn't meet the needs anymore of how, how you manage salt. That was approved. And so we embarked on a process to hire an engineering firm, design it, go through the process with the Planning Board for site plan approval, put together bid documents, run those through Town Council, double-check some of our steps with the state as well, put it out to bid. And the result of that is the memo that's in your packet from the Assistant Director. We received two bids. The lowest, lower one was from a company called Iron Horse Structures for $129,000. Staff has reviewed that bid with a bidder, make sure that everything was included. Has been out to look at another shed built by them in a neighboring town. Talked to references and all that sort of thing. So that's great news. It's less than we had thought it would cost based on our early estimates. And I should also add that we received a state earmark for $50,000. So we have a total of 360. 129 is not the total cost. We still have to take down the current shed. We have to make the site ready for the pad for the new shed. And then the site plan approval from the Planning Board also requires that we put in a privacy fence, if you will, in one area to just limit the impact on the neighbors. So that work will be done with contracts we already have. As you know, we bid out a contract every year for various site services. We'll use that for some of that work. We can use some of our own forces for some of the work and a surge bid for asphalt. So overall, we expect if, you know, we've got contingencies built in, but if everything came in exactly as we, you know, planned and estimated, we'd be over $100,000 below budget, which is great because then we just need to borrow less to pay for it. And so if you approve authorizing me to sign the contract, we'll go forward and do that and, and get to work.
There was quite a significant difference between the two bids. Is there a reason for that?
I think the second bid was more what we thought it would cost. So we were initially, you know, suspect, but why is this bid so much less? And I know that both Blair and Barry are here to answer questions that I might not have all the specifics on. But I don't think we realized that there was this, a local vendor who was building what we were looking for in this area. And they're a lot sharper pencil than the second one, which is why, you know, we went through it carefully to make sure that they weren't leaving something out or we're going to get a surprise later that, oh, we forgot, you know, a portion of it.
So this is comparing apples to apples?
And Blythe, also to add on, pardon me for interrupting. The other piece of that too was that when we went for the initial funding and we figured out the initial cost, that was before Town Meeting last year. And then over the winter, we looked for alternate ways to save money, which is, which led us to the Attorney General and clarifying that we could do some of the work on our own and, and use other means to acquire asphalt and to be able to do some of the work, which has significantly cut our cost.
Thank you. Any questions?
None of mine.
I have a couple. So if it's, to your point about apples to apples, why is one so much less than the other?
I guess I would turn to Barry or Blair. Do you, do you have a sense of why the coal contracting was, was much higher than Iron Horse?
My initial, my initial discussion with, with the vendor that was more expensive, I get the feeling that he was leery of prevailing wage. That company was out of Connecticut. He was very shy when it came to figuring out prevailing wage scales and trying to judge what it was going to cost him to transport blocks. Being out of the area certainly seemed to be a disadvantage for that particular vendor, whereas the other vendor is pretty local.
That makes sense. So but with respect to what if coal had a reason to be, you know, if there are, things aren't as inexpensive as Iron Horse thinks that they will be, to put it, do we owe them or is it the guaranteed rate?
That is a guaranteed rate.
So even if it costs them what coal was worried about, say? And I'm sure, I understand that one's local and one's far away, but whatever it was scared them into hopping up the price. Some of it came to pass. Is it on them or on Norfolk?
It's on them.
And also, and because they're not, they're just providing, they're putting, providing the block, they're erecting it on what we prepare for them through other means. There's, I think there's less likelihood of an unforeseen condition that they could imagine, that they could say, oh, we didn't know about this and therefore, you know, we need to negotiate what that's going to cost, you know, higher than what we planned. The tarp top is the tarp top, you know? The, what anchors it to the bottom is, I mean, I'm not speaking in technical terms.
No, but not in lies.
One of the benefits of this project was that we've had plenty of time over the winter to really go through it over and over and over again, to really try to trim any and all costs that we possibly can off of this to end up with a quality building, but at the same time, limit the amount of money that we have to spend to get the job done.
So that brings me sort of the second question because if I'm, if I understand it, they have their bid and then there's the other expenses. And even with the two combined expenses. And even with the two combined expenses, um, we end up on, under, under the budget. Now, you know, the more under budget, the more money can go back for other things. But nevertheless, I always love to hear things under budget. That secondary piece, I'm assuming includes things like getting rid of the current structure, making the, the area ready, site work or whatever it's called, ready for the new structure, et cetera. Um, is that what that, you know, includes? And who's removing the existing structure?
So the DPW will remove the existing structure. Kadash will come in and we will, uh, tear it apart, uh, and dispose of it locally here, uh, at our cost to do so, as well as, uh, paving, uh, we will pave the, uh, existing pad that we need to do and do all of the site work ourselves. Uh, and that may be another issue, um, with the blocks that I believe that the more expensive vendor had. I believe he was, uh, not just worried about getting the blocks here, but acquiring them. Whereas the, uh, hopefully the winning bidder, he, uh, does make his own block. So, uh, from that perspective, and which we've already checked out and looked at, um, seems to be a significant cost savings for the, the winning bidder, hopefully.
So, um, just so that, for clarification purposes, does the additional cost, and I'll, I'll cite to it so that I'm not so vague sounding, apologies, it was kind of a, a long day, but the additional cost number, hold on, I'm coming, I'm coming.
94.650?
Oh, you beat me to it, yes. The 94.
Yes.
The 94, does that include removing the existing structure?
Yes.
And, um, do you do anything regarding checking, um, I don't know what the section of the statute is. I know in the private world, it would be like 21E or something. Do you check for contamination, soil contamination? Do you root around to see what's going on once you remove the building with the soil and environmentally?
So the soil itself shouldn't have to be disturbed. We did take test pits already, uh, as part of the planning board process. We've, uh, done perk tests and soil tests around that area already. The grade of, uh, of the structure will actually be higher than it is now. Uh, so we will bring in some clean fill in order to, uh, to make that elevation happen. Uh, but the existing ground, other than the removal of some current asphalt, uh, should be undisturbed.
And the building itself is, is a wood building that's had salt in it, so.
Right.
Well, you know, we all think, I mean, I don't mean to move over, you just never know who, who, you know, whose Uncle Bob decided to store a bunch of oil drums in the back of something, whatever. I just always worry about that kind of stuff, but that's great. Um, last few questions. So you're, we're taking, you, we are taking down the existing structure. Do we take it away?
That is correct. We will put it into containers and, uh, and dispose of it.
And then my last one is, um, and that's all included in the 94.650?
Yes, we have a tipping price we pay to get rid of material like that. We're in the trash business.
Right.
So we'll utilize you.
We really.
We really are.
We really are.
So we, you know, we have our.
So you have a really good handle on what.
We have our own, I mean, driving the truck to wherever we're dropping it off is, you know, there's gas. I don't think we'll charge this project, but, well, maybe we will, given the price of gas these days. Uh, but.
We will walk it to wherever it's going for less money. Um, and then I guess the last thing is, do things like, is the new, does the new thing require anything other than the roof and the boards? I mean, is there like electricity or plumbing or anything like that? And who does that? And is that included in the 94.650?
There will be one electric out there that already has electric service. So there will require an electrician to, uh, put up a spotlight just for safety purposes. But other than that, there's, uh, no other facilities out there.
And who do we use for that? And is that included in the price?
Uh, that would use a, a local electrician. And it's, it is included in the price.
Okay. That's it. That's all my salt questions.
Any questions?
I can add on that.
No, I, I have no questions either.
I have oddly been fixated on the salt sheds since before town meeting. I think because whenever it first happened, I was like, whoa, we got insurance money and, right? Like the whole having a cart before the horse stuff, so whatever. Salt sheds, they're my jam apparently.
Excellent.
Everybody needs a hobby.
We have a motion.
Thank you.
I guess it's my turn. I move that the board vote to award a contract for the purchase and installation of a salt shed to Iron Horse Structures in the amount of 129,000 and authorize the town administrator to execute a contract.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. And then I see Reagan here, um, who is applying to be part of our conservation commission. Welcome Reagan.
Good evening. Thank you.
Do you want to lead us in, Blithe, or?
I think everything that you need is in your packet. She is, um, she, uh, as, she's got a lot of experience. Uh, she serves the town of Canton right now, so she brings, I think, experience and knowledge to us that could, I assume is going to be invaluable. Um, and the conservation commission is interested in having her appointed. So she's here to meet you.
Awesome. Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about your interest in the position?
Um, sure, yeah. I, um, I moved to Norfolk in 2020, so I'm relatively new to the town. I moved here from Wallfall, so I'm not too far away. Um, I have two boys, um, one in first grade and one in third grade, so they'll be going through the school systems. And this is the community that, um, my husband and I intend to raise them in. I've been working for the town of Canton as their agent, um, for their conservation commission, um, for about three and a half years now. I'm a certified member of the Mass Association of Conservation Commissions. Um, and this would be an opportunity for me, um, to really put my knowledge to work to serve the community of Norfolk. Um, and so I'd really be, um, I'd welcome the opportunity to do so.
Awesome. Any questions?
Right ahead.
No, I, you go first.
I was gonna say, you know, I think we first saw your application in January and all of us were like, what, really? Wow! That is fantastic. So I'm, I'm very happy that we found a way to be able to align everything. So meeting schedules lined up and you were able to accommodate, uh, your other commitments to be able to work with this. Just very excited to have your perspective and your experience on the commission. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Hopefully, yeah, I'll help, uh, I'll help keep us out of trouble and, and straight in line. I'm sure they're already doing a good job, but if I can keep us on the straight and narrow. I know, um, you know, having volunteers, it's hard to keep up with all the laws and regulations. And so that's something that I do all day long. And so I'll be able to bring that expertise, um, to, to Norfolk.
You're good.
Awesome. Stacy?
Um, well, I don't have a question either. I do have a comment because I, I also, you know, I knew from, from communicating with you, your experience relative to, um, the conservation commissions, but I just think it's super cool that you worked with the aquarium. So that is all I have to say, but I was like, then I'm like reading on, like, Norfolk not flush with bodies of water that, um, wee, 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 a little bit. Probably has some salamanders and some other critters that rely on H2O, quote Bobby Boucher, but I do think that's cool. She.
There, she's back.
I was like, she, she was so disgusted, she went away.
No, I just brought my son, actually, for the first time. We went on the Cardinal Trail behind the H. Olive Day School.
Oh, cool.
And went, and there's a whole bunch of salamander and frog egg, um, masses in there. So that was really fun for us because we live right around the corner on Midway Street. And so we checked that out and, um, you know, I'm really excited to check out the different town properties. And, um, I'm also working on a certificate in advanced botany, just refreshing my, my botany skills. So one thing I'd like to help the town do is help inventory the town-owned properties to see what we have there and what we're protecting. Um, and maybe help be able to see what, what other opportunities there are to protect some of Norfolk's, um, you know, unique natural heritage moving forward.
Awesome. Very cool. Very cool. Any? We're thrilled to have you here and we are, um, admire your commitment to your community. So thank you and welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm excited.
A motion?
I move that the board vote to appoint Reagan Maloney to the conservation commission to a term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
And then we have a calendar event.
We do. Uh, the last meeting, we approved road closure for a block party. Um, and they need to move it from Sunday, June 12th, which was their first request, to Saturday, June 11th, which is, uh, no concern by the public safety departments. It's fine. Uh, they're just asking you to accommodate the schedule change.
Awesome. I don't have any issues. Do you have any issues?
No issues, no questions.
None.
A motion?
I move that the board approve a road closure on Hemlock Lane on June 11th to replace the road closure on June 12th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I think that actually, sorry Kevin, I think that actually, that was supposed to be me. I apologize. Just deferring my responsibilities yet.
And town administrator updates?
A couple of things. Checked the state's website about COVID cases. I think there's only eight more that were reported on their portal since the last meeting. Um, I'm sure there's more that people don't take PCR tests for anymore, but overall things seem good. We're looking at the, uh, you know, with all the changes of what the feds are requiring for travel and stuff, thinking about whether we should change the mask, um, requirements in town buildings if you're not vaccinated. There's, that's the one place we're still requiring people to wear them. Does that make sense? Going to continue to look at that. Um, but overall, things I think are okay. Um, town meeting next week, same night, 6:00 PM, uh, in the, in the middle school guidance conference room. So we'll gather to just, uh, prep ahead for anything that needs to come up. Couple of things, as we work to finish the motions and the presentations, uh, we have identified that the, the two articles were related to the wastewater treatment plant. We will be able to handle the shortfall through the retained earnings that we have in the fund. Uh, if we don't receive any more payments, of course, we want to be paid. Uh, but if we don't, we, doesn't look like we need a free cash transfer to get through this year, uh, which is better news than I thought we were going to have. Um, but still doesn't completely, uh, solve that issue. And then to the article that follows it about the vote to set up the sewer district, um, the latest advice is to go ahead and revote the 2010 language and map rather than just reaffirm it. The Senate counsel got back to us through Senator Roush's office that, um, that's really the preferred way, uh, to assure those that, in, in Boston that, you know, what we're asking them to do is what we mean today. Um, I will point out that the map from 2010, which actually predates us taking the wastewater treatment plant over, um, is not, does not completely align. It was, you know, was made, I'm not sure what went into choosing the district that was thought then. Um, there are now homes in some areas where the district lines would be. Um, but on the flip side of it, the district looks more like what we would do if we continue down the path of developing a second plant. It's also not perfect, but it's more alike what we're looking for. So, you know, I think it's, it is asking residents to go out a little bit on a leap of faith that we know this district isn't exactly right. But if we're, if we're asking them to vote again what they did then, we're asking them to kind of take some trust in us that we know that wherever that project goes in the future, we will need to come back and adjust the map. But having the district developed so we can deal with the current problem and then be ready to look forward to the future is, I think, a good thing. So I just wanted you to know that, so. Um, a couple of other things. There's a nice little, um, letter in your, uh, in your books, uh, from the state. The winter recovery money came through. It's 255,000. I bring it up only because if it was based on the strict chapter 90, we'd be getting less than 200. So yay, we're getting 56, 57,000 more to spend on potholes and paving. So that's great news. Um, we are continuing to work on our ARPA plan, our ARPA plan. Um, I'd like to think we'll bring it to you on the 17th, but with town meeting next week, I'm not sure. Um, because, you know, we are spending a little bit of money at town meeting, you know, to, uh, to implement a couple of things and, you know, we want to get a, a plan in front of you so you can react to it. Do you like it? Do you want to go in a different direction? So either the next meeting or the first meeting in June, we'll have that to, um, bat around and see if, if we're on the right track. And then lastly, the new website, the content has been migrated. We are close to being able to look at the basic site and start to tweak. So it's coming along and, uh, stay tuned on that.
That's exciting.
It is exciting. So those are the updates.
I have one question, Blithe, related to town meeting. You'll have to remind me, I don't know if this conversation ever went anywhere or not, but did we ever discuss the potential for switching town meeting in the election around? Or did we never actually go through talking about the execution of that?
Not on my watch.
Got it. Thank you.
Certainly can be done depending on what people want to do.
Bylaw, right?
Yeah, we just need to change the dates, I think. We've got so much bylaw to talk about this time.
Right.
It deserves to have a different night. I mean, we're actually going to be putting out a chart to show all the codification changes. Um, it's probably going to be a 15 to 20-page document that people can hold as they sit there. But, um, there's a lot to talk about, so. Short answer, no.
Thank you.
Excellent. And we have some warrants.
Um, it's my turn, I guess. I move that the board approve four warrants for the period of April 19th, 2022 through April 26th, 2022, as printed on the agenda for this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And some minutes.
And I move that the board approve the regular meeting minutes of March 29th, 2022